...right? A meeting next week in a couple of weeks?
Yep.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can't believe you waited this long to share them. Twelve years later.
Twelve years.
Because this might get traction up. All right, are we ready to go?
No.
Andy?
You're right.
Hi. Would you call the meeting to order? Thank you.
All right. Andy Bertram, present. Joe Becker, present. Peter Bussenbach, here. Dan Kader, here. Scott Gergen, here. Lisa Dean, here. Russ Roloff, here. Superintendent Collins, here.
All right. Thank you very much. Could I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
It's a move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion to approve the, and a second, to approve the minutes of the November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, regular board meeting?
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Terrific. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion and a second to approve the bills payable?
Remove that repay the bills.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We're going to kick off, quick, 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 into the good news, which is our employees of the semester. It's probably got something to do with why we have such fabulous attendance at our meeting tonight. Although I think these are fascinating, so, I mean, I come every time. Our first employee, you guys are going to come up and do this one. Is Ron Banky. Ron, would you come up?
Thank you.
I'm going to have each person come up and stand with us, and I'll read the submission to the, to our committee that supported Ron's election. Ron is the best. We are all so grateful for the work he does. That's why you're my first. So grateful for the work he does for the district. Ron is not only extremely knowledgeable in the technology area, he is professional and kind. He handles every technology issue with great attitude, even if the problem is something minor. He never makes you feel guilty for asking for his help. He is so approachable and very patient, which makes working with him wonderful. Countless times, Ron has made a trip over to help fix something so that we were all able to go on and do our jobs. He comes in a timely manner and is only just a phone call away. It is a true benefit to our district having employees such as Ron, who not only do their work with great integrity, but are also incredibly kind and helpful. Congratulations. So, in addition, do you have a speech, Ron?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to step on your time there. You are all welcome to have speeches, by the way. In addition to the acknowledgement of a job very well done, and a certificate that the employees can display at work, or at home, or in their car, wherever they like to have it, we've also received a donation of an Applebee's gift card that each person will be able to, to use, so I would suggest just make your way to Applebee's right after, and see if you can't get yourself in on one of these gift cards. Close personal friendships. Our next employee of the semester is Tim Collins, our superintendent.
I wasn't on the selection committee.
Mr. Collins has been the superintendent in Hastings for over fifteen years, and over that time, we've gone from statutory operating debt to financial solvency. This happens in no small part to Mr. Collins' fiscal aptitude. We've passed five levy referendums and two bond referendums because Mr. Collins is able to explain to our community the reasons these referendums in a straightforward, no-nonsense manner. Mr. Collins has had to make tough decisions, and they're not always popular. Closing both Tilden and Cooper were not easy, but it was necessary. Mr. Collins continues to be fiscally responsible and fiercely competitive, but as we've seen in recent years, he's also able to have fun with the staff and encourage them to have fun with each other and their students. His welcome back programs have become legendary, and he's certainly not afraid to have a little fun at his own expense. When I read that the first time, I pictured him on the treadmill. Flashback to that video, that's what I was holding on to. As we continue to navigate the waters of declining enrollment and school funding, it is clear that Mr. Collins will continue to strive for a good balance between the fiscal responsibility required by our community and what is best for students and staff of Hastings' public schools. Leadership is not about outstanding achievements, it's about keeping your team focused on a goal and motivated to do their best to accomplish that goal, especially when the stakes are high and the consequences really matter. This may not always make Mr. Collins popular, but it does make him very good at his job.
Well, thank you. I'd like to thank INTECH. INTECH sponsors this, and they're the ones that pay for the fifty dollars to Applebee's and give recognition. It's always a great night for us as board members to hear about the employees who are here this evening, and really, that's why I've been here fifteen years, is because of these employees. It makes leading very easy. I am very, very competitive, that is very, very true, and I wish I could explain my own personal budget to my three daughters. They don't quite understand it as well as, as everybody else, but thank you very much. I'm humbled. Thank you.
Eric Dietz. Eric Dietz is an industrial technology teacher at the high school. Eric is one of those teachers who exhibits the essence of a gifted teacher. Eric is very in tune with the students and the varying degrees of skills that they bring to his class. On many occasions, he's accommodated the needs, skill levels, and interests to suit each individual student, giving them the opportunity to create a project that can be their own. Eric's passion for young people is obvious when he works with and teaches his students. It shows in his patience, as he graciously guides, directs, and answers multiple questions in a class period. It shows as he continually helps and assists students, not seeing their questions as interruptions, but as learning opportunities. It shows in his dedication. He is a caring, patient teacher who always has a smile on his face and is ready to help students at any time. Thank you so much. Thank you. Korean Geiken. Korean Geiken is the lead cook at Pinecrest Elementary. Pinecrest Elementary serves the largest elementary student body in the district, and Korean Geiken does an amazing job serving and feeding a huge number of students breakfast and lunch. She's found creative ways to meet the needs of over two hundred students in the morning who eat breakfast. She goes above and beyond for our students and staff, creating an inviting environment for students and staff alike to enjoy their breakfasts or lunch. Kyle Latch. Kyle Latch is a principal at JFK Elementary. Kyle's done an exemplary job at JFK in the short time he's been a principal. Kyle goes above and beyond every single day. No matter the challenge, Kyle steps up with a smile and a positive attitude. There was a mishap with the automated calling system the first day of school. Kyle handled this situation like a problem. He was informative, understanding, kind, collected, and patient during the frantic parent phone calls, communication with law enforcement, and overwhelmed staff. Kyle also works hard to make the new bridge program successful at Kennedy. This involves hours of preparation with staff, hours of communication with parents, and hours of paperwork to make it the best possible environment for the students. On most days, you can find him outside greeting students and parents before school. You can tell he genuinely cares about and values his students and his work. Thank you.
I would echo a lot of the comments Tim shared. I feel very honored and fortunate to work for such a great team in Hastings and at Kennedy, and when I say team, you know, support staff like Ron and technology, the cooks, the custodians, and all of the other support staff within the building. Very fortunate to work with administrative team, superintendent, business office, and other principals within the district, were able to problem-solve and help each other, and very fortunate for that, and I just thank the Hastings community and all the staff that are a part of it, and a patient wife at home, so, thank you.
Patty is an instructional assistant at Tilden. Patty's worked for the district for a number of years, most recently at Tilden, and in that time, she has become a valuable member of the Tilden team. Her energy and kindness are contagious. She comes to work every day with a smile and a laugh. She makes everyone around her feel special. Watching Patty interact with kids is inspiring. She treats every child like they are her own. She's an absolutely amazing PSA, and her attitude and dedication to our district should be recognized. Patty is one of the friendliest, kindest, and most positive people I have ever met. She makes coming to work each day a great experience for both the students and the staff.
I'm so grateful. First, I want to thank God for the opportunity, for life, for the strength that he gives me every morning to wake up and, and do my job. Thanks to all of you, to this district, for, yeah, the time I have been sharing here has been a great experience, but I think I couldn't have done this without my kiddos that I really love, like, it's true, they are a part of my life, they have done so much in me, they have made me a better person, and I'm so grateful for also the staff that I work with. They are great people. McCullough was part of my life too, and now I'm at Tilden, so, I'm, I'm just thankful and grateful for this, this honor. Okay, thank you.
Well, everybody is welcome to stay. You are not required to stay. And if you want to slide out, this would be a good time. Thanks so much. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
And all the family who are supporting them, and, and being employees for this.
Can we get the paper?
Yes, I'd be happy to give you the paper that I read. I will give it to you right now, so you can add it to your frame.
For sure. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night, Patty. Patty was one of the first people I met when I started bringing my kids to ECFE. Talk about a positive welcome to the Hastings district. Fabulous. All right, Tim?
Well, superintendent's report. More good news, I probably should have shared this in front of all of them as, as well because these two individuals have given a commitment as well. Dan definitely with a longer commitment. Again, that's where Andy's smarter than you. Sorry, I know you've been trying to train him all along, but, Andy, why don't you come Just on, on behalf of the, the school district and the community and the board members, we want to thank you for your gift of time and your commitment and hopping on board, and just being positive as we went out for the bond and the levy and helping us get that passed as, as well, so, very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
We wish you and your family the very best, and you have a Hastings Raider, and you'll be running for the board again sometime.
Maybe for years.
All right. Wow, it's been twelve years. I don't know how many meetings that's been, but it's been over, you know, probably three hundred meetings with us, and another hundred and fifty that you've been at nine seventeen, but just truly, truly an unbelievable commitment of time and dedication, and we've gone through a lot together. And we've had some ups and downs together, but your leadership and your friendship has been appreciated, and we wish you the very best, and be thanking us on Wednesday nights when we're here.
I will be. Maybe once in a while, we even tune in on TV, but I probably won't come down. Now, I just want to say I've always wanted one of these, I handed out many, and I always kind of wanted one of these, but I did want to pass on my thanks to the community for being very supportive over my entire twelve, twelve years, and the school staff, teachers, administration as well, for being very supportive. But probably most of all, most of all, is my patient family, who, you know, it's really, this has been kind of a labor of love for me, you know, right? But I'm not home doing my things I should be doing there at these times, so I'd like to thank, especially my wife Karen, and then my parents too, who have really, I think they're going to kind of miss the campaigning, because they were always about yard time and everything, so, thank you.
The next thing I just want to remind board members is that Kim and I have had conversations with Springstead. Springstead Financial is the one who helps lead us through the bond process, and we had a phone conversation about a week ago with Springstead. We're anticipating that we'll get the, the bonds on, on March twenty-eighth, and so already we have several individuals within the school district that would like to start spending some of that money on the needs, but we really can't do that until March twenty-eighth. There's, there are some things that we'll need to do before then, soil moorings, where we're going to do the track soil moorings at Todd Field, et cetera, parking lots. We had put money aside out of our capital so we could help with that transition, but all the other things will have to wait until, until March twenty-eighth. These bonds are a little bit different than, than the other bonds from the, from the standpoint of, there's a, there's a committee and a selection process for once the competition and the bids do start coming in and who we hire, and so that's a little bit different than other bonds that we've had for the high school, et cetera. But again, now starting in January, Kim starts getting together all the financial information. Eventually, Kim and I are in on a phone call for our AAA rating. They'll ask us about our community, they'll ask us about our budget, they'll ask us about the operating levy coming in that was approved, et cetera, which all will bode very favorable when we go out for the, the bonds. The fact that we do have financial stability, the fact that we did pass an operating levy in two thousand seventeen will all bode well for people who are looking to bid on these bonds. You know, one of my questions was, how will the impact on what's happening at the federal government on tax cuts, et cetera, because people who like to purchase bonds, there's tax incentives for them, and they don't believe that there'd be any impact on that federal law having impact on the sale of our bonds, so, looks, looks good. We begin the process, and we start moving forward, looking for the, the dollars to come in, on, on or about March twenty-eighth. The bond project process, I just want to share a little bit with, with you. What happens on the bond project is you as board members are heavily involved. You sit in facility committees, you're with the task force, you're here every two weeks. We go out for the, the passage of the, of the bond, and then all of a sudden, you're left out of the loop, so to speak. And that's, and that's going to continue to happen, happen a little bit until we, until we get going. So, if you look up at the, up at the screen, the bottom four circles are what I would say that in white, safety and security, there's a circle down there, and then there's a circle up above. The white is what I'd say that WOLD is going to do totally and have a heavy, heavy hand in. The upper circles are what we, as a district, believe that we can do some of those without the guidance from, from WOLD. There's two circles for security because we, we looked at the security as, for example, security cameras. We can't do that on our own, we need WOLD. When it gets into the servers, when it gets into the bidding for that, we definitely need their expertise. The safety and security for doors or glass allowance, we can do that ourselves without having to pay them to lead it, so, we can walk through the middle school site and say, name five areas where our glass would really need to protect, and at the high school, the glass, what doors need to be replaced, so we can do some of that ourselves. The flexible learning, that's the furniture, the fixtures and equipment, that circles up there above for us, and the technology that ties into our, our five-year, our plan, and again, we will lead through a lot on that. If you come down below, middle school is, and Todd Field are, are two of the best examples. There will be lots of user groups that will be met with before we even meet with you as, as board members. We've already started that process. I've met two or three times with WOLD already on the middle school and the HVAC system. It's going to be a huge project, and we're talking about can we do that project while students are in school, can we do it over the summers only, what will that mean? So, what will happen is that the middle school project, we're meeting again next week on that, is it will get to a point where I feel like I have enough information then to bounce it off the facility committee. So then I'll bounce it off of the facility committee, and then I'll bring it to the rest of the board at a work session, and that's, that's how, so, the people who aren't on the facility task force, will you be not as in tune as the rest? Yes, but that's happened with our other committees as well. Todd Field is a great example, as, I won't even be in on some of these user groups. So for Todd Field example, WOLD will come and meet with, first with Trent Hanson, and then together they'll say, well, who are some of the user groups that we need to pull together? Then Trent Hanson and WOLD will meet with those user groups, whether it be lacrosse, soccer, football. I then won't get involved in that until it comes into, well, what is the design of the entrance going to look like? Are we going to go with chrome rubber or not? What are cost projections? Then I get involved at, at that level, and then after I get involved, then again, I go to the facility, then it goes to work session, and then we go from that point forward. So, I, I thought that this was a, a good diagram that we'll put together to give you as board members a feel for what it, what it will look like. Any questions on it? And again, in January, we start, you know, coming up with, because two new board members will be on, so that's when we start doing our, our committee assignments, and we start having that, that discussion. But until then, who's ever on the facility committee will work hand in hand with me, but, you know, with the holiday break coming up, I don't, I don't believe that I'd meet with the facility group until probably mid-January, mid-January anyway. And I, and I think that just publicly to drip it out, there's, there's two things that, that we are definitely looking at on the middle school. I know that board members are aware of that, is do we look to do the middle school HVAC problem over, project over three summers? Or do we look to do it summer, then have contractors here during the school year, and then summer? And how would that work? Where would staff move? Where would classrooms move? Would we have enough space? And that's one of the things that we're, we're analyzing, you know, right now. And it's about a ten percent savings, or about three million dollars of savings if we don't have to go three summers, because they're bidding it out three years from now. So we're definitely looking at that to see if we can get that three million dollars of savings of doing it summer, school year, summer. The other thing that we're having a meeting next week is to start looking at boundary lines for our elementary schools, and we'll start analyzing that in January, and all board members in January will get, get the information on that. Definitely, when you look to reorganize boundary lines, that's, that's a big deal for, for parents and, and families, but what's happening right now is Pinecrest Elementary is around six hundred and twenty students, and JFK Elementary is at about three ninety. Along with that then comes an imbalance of, of class sizes, also levels of inefficiency when you have three sections of second grade at one site, five at another, and you're hiring specialists, and so it's time to look at. I'm, I'm not saying that, that we will redo the boundary lines for two thousand eighteen, but again, this is an opportunity for me to share with the board and with the community that I'm going to at least start the analysis of it, and that means meeting with our bus company, meeting with our elementary principals, and, and starting to look at it. Of course, it doesn't impact middle school or high school because all students go to those sites. So those are two things that we're analyzing right now as we speak, and next week, and into the first part of January, that I will bring back to you, not at the work session in January, but probably at the board meeting in January. First reading of policy five oh nine point one. I shared with board members in an, in an email that in the last couple of years, we've had an increase of families who either say that they're living here, and they live in Wisconsin, or that they started out living here, and then they moved to Wisconsin. So we have some situations where there'll be a family, I'll just say Prescott, not picking on Prescott, but they'll want their son or daughter, as a sophomore, junior, or senior, to, to finish their high school here, so they'll say that, yeah, my address is, you know, some Pine Street, and we don't, we're not the address, address police, we don't drive there and look for their car, et cetera, we accept it on base fact. But then what happens is, I'll just say things happen, all of a sudden, we send a, a mailing there, and we get the mailing back, or we need to contact there, and we can't contact, and we find out that they're not, they're not living there. Well, we don't get reimbursement from somebody who lives in Wisconsin, the state of Minnesota doesn't give us reimbursement. We also have situations in which a parent may want their child to really go to Pinecrest Elementary because it's an early drop-off, and that meets their schedule, or vice versa. They might want their child to really go to McCullough because it's a later drop-off. So again, they tell us an address that's not their, their address, and/or that the child is living with Grandma and Grandpa when they live in Cannon Falls, or they live in Northfield, and there's other situations going on behind the scenes, but yet Grandma and Grandpa don't have full custody yet. So we're starting to run into a lot more of those situations, and we're also running into situations where somebody will say, yeah, the birth date of my child is this, so that they can enroll their child in kindergarten when their child is really only four point three months old. Well, they put on, they put on the form that the, the birth date is, you know, June twentieth, when really the birth date is December third. So, what, what we've looked at then is we looked at other policies that other districts have on enrollment. Indiana and Kathy Blaha, Kathy deals a lot with, with that policy, I don't know if you can get it up on the screen or not, or...
No, I did have it.
Okay. But basically, I'll give you some time to, to look at it, but basically, the policy is saying, for those people in the audience and for those people at home, is that we need you to bring in some proof. We need you to bring in whether it be a driver's license, which will have your, your, could have your residence on it. We may ask you for a birth certificate. We have the right to ask for these documents, and we also have the right to say, well, then your child is not starting here until we get some of this documentation. The policy also outlines that for enrollment purposes, you go to the site of the child where you think they live, so if you think that they live in McCullough or JFK, and/or you can come to the district office to find out that information. With technology now, we can plug it in and tell you, we'll give us, give us your residence, and we can tell you which, which school you're supposed to go to. So, basically, the first reading is that you as a board, you, you hear about it, you hear the rationale of why we're going to the policy, you take, you take some time to, to look at it. Then between now and our next board meeting in January, if you have some questions, you send them to me, and then I would get together with the policy committee, we'd talk about it, we'd fine-tune it, and we'd bring it back to the January board meeting. But basically, it's giving some meat and potatoes to the administrators to be able to say, you know, if Dan Kader would be at JFK Elementary, and he'd tell me that he lives on Pine Street, I'd say, well, can you please give me some proof? Do you have a lease agreement? Do you have, you know, your driver's license? What, what proof do you have if, if we think that something's not kosher?
I do like that there's the ability for the school to make an exception in compelling for specific situations, so...
But, yeah, so basically, we're asking for parents to be honest. And with the homeless law, and whether or not, you know, you, you can now live with a, a grandparent, you can, we know that that's happening more so than ever before with young families, that those situations do occur, but just be upfront with us and tell us that that's the reason, so that we, that we're fair to everybody who's, who's enrolling their child in our school district. So, take some time, read it as you look at it. In the next week, if you would say, say anything, hey, I don't like this part of it, but like I said, it is pretty straightforward, just giving us the right to ask, and as Dan said, also the ability for us administratively to make some decisions based on scenarios and situations. And if, and if... And if I do hear some concerns, then I'll pull together the Policy Committee and we'll look at it before our January 17th Board meeting.
And this draft was developed from another district, or is it MSBA?
We looked at some other model policies from other districts.
Yeah, existing policies.
Yeah.
MSBA doesn't have a policy.
Yeah, that's what I suspected, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
And with that, for very Veteran Board members, Truth and Taxation, at one time used to have to be a separate meeting from the regular school board meeting, and then thank you legislators for saying that we could do it on the same evening that we have a Board meeting. So Kim will do the Truth and Taxation meeting. A lot of the information we go through already in October and November of our budgets and our finances, etc. So as Board members, you're aware of most of the information. And then at the end of the Truth and Taxation presentation, we ask if there's any questions from the audience, because that's the opportunity for the public then to ask questions about the Truth and Taxation presentation. So at this point, I'll turn over this always exciting presentation to Kim.
Okay, so Tim already kind of explained, we're required to have a public hearing before you can certify the final levy tonight. Okay, so we'll start with the tax levy calendar. What you're going to be approving tonight is the, it's for taxes 2017 payable 2018, which we receive in the 18, 19 school year. And then we're also required to discuss the current year budget during this Truth and Taxation. So we're looking at taxes for next year, but we're discussing the current year budget, so it can be a little bit confusing. And so the calendar for the levy starts back in May where there's any changes for the legislature. In July, you guys approved the LTFM application, and that was sent in. In August, we send in all the pupil projections and any other data that they need to run our levy for us. In August, we set the hearing for tonight. And then in September, the MDA sends us the initial levy, which you guys approved the max. And then November, the county mails the notifications to the property owners. And then in December, we have the hearing, which is tonight, and you'll certify the final levy. In most years, this is basically the schedule, but this year you had the whole other schedule going all the way back to January where you had your facility meeting and deciding whether you were going to sell bonds and increase the referendum, and then the whole election process that Deanna goes through. Because the bottom line is, whatever you approve in September, you can approve less than that in December, but you cannot approve more unless it's a bond, or voter-approved bond, or an increase in your referendum. Okay, the factors that can impact our tax levy. The issues driven by legislation, which they could change, the tax capacity rate, which did not change this year. They could change basically any of the formulas within the levy. Issues determined by district voters, which will be voter-approved building bonds or voter-approved referendums, which you have both of them now this year, but only one of them affects the levy. The building bonds are not going to affect it till two or three years out. Those payments start when the high school bonds go off, so you won't notice it. But the referendum did increase the levy. Local factors, inflationary pressure on real estate markets. Everybody's individual assessed market could change. You could have a possible change in property classification, which I said as before, that did not change this year. Or you could have done improvements on your home that wasn't previously taxed, but they're taxed now. Okay, so what we're supposed to do for this is we're supposed to compare the levy that you approved last year compared to this levy that you're going to approve this year. So the total amounts here that are determined by the state legislature, that total is $6,466,018. And that's both general fund and community ed. So that's an increase of $253,472 over the prior year. And then taxes approved by local voters, it's $6,038,431, which is 1.3 million above last year. And then debt redemption, which is your voter-approved building bonds, and it's all facility health and safety, it's now called LTFM. It's $265,627, which is 2,407 less than last year. And the building bonds, these aren't the new ones, these are the ones that we have before. There was an increase of $85,928. And it's not really an increase. What happens is for your building bonds, we levy 105% of the payment for principal and interest, because you could have some people that don't pay their taxes, or after they spread the taxes, a homeowner could get a reduction, so you don't get the money. So it's supposed to cover you with that. And so then every year, they do a debt excess calculation, and if you have too much money in your fund, they'll reduce it. So last year, we had a higher reduction than this year, so it makes it look like it was more, but it really isn't. So the total property taxes for the current year is $17,134,017, which is 1.6 million higher than last year. And you'll see the majority of that has to do with the referendum increase. Okay, so for the general fund, this is the explanations of the changes. So the equity revenue is $39,076 less than it was last year. Equity revenue has three formulas. And one of those formulas is directly based on your referendum dollars. So the higher referendum you have, the less equity aid you get. So when the increase was voted on, it reduces then our equity revenue. So it reduced that by $85,656. Transition revenue was reduced by $1,140, and it's just prior year adjustments, because everything in this levy is based on estimated student counts for two years out. So you're always going to see these adjustments. Reemployment, it's the same thing. You estimated what you thought your reemployment was going to be, and then they bring it to actual. Okay, so the referendum increased by 1.2 million. There was also prior year adjustments, which is based on the student count. The vote actually increased it by 1.4, which was then offset by the equity of minus $85,000. So the increase brought in about 1.3 million. Career and technical was a decrease of $9,753, and it was prior year adjustments. The state school levy was a decrease of $14,765. That's also prior year adjustments. And this, we also levy for our portion in 2017, and we also levy for some social workers. Student achievement was, what that is, about four years back, you know, we get a formula from the state per student. Well, then they set where we had to pay a certain percent of that out of levy. So for the past four years, we've been doing that, and every year, they've been decreasing that. That is now decreased to zero. So it's not that we're getting less money, it's that we're just no longer levying any portion of it, it's all state aid now. Operating capital, it's the same thing, we're not getting less money, they just changed the ratio of it, so more of it is paid by state aid instead of levy. And then long-term facility maintenance, this is the last year of the increase of, they had a three-year increase. So it increased from $292 to $380 per pupil unit, and that's the final increase, so we'll stay at that now unless there's legislative changes in the future. And then the lease levy for leasing, our leases we have, and it's also 2017 leases, our part of it, was a reduction of $9,933. So this levy, the total change to the general fund was an increase of 1.55379, which the majority of that was the referendum increase. Okay, the community ed portion, it was just a reduction of $640, and that was prior year for the school-aged disabled care program. And then debt service, it was an increase of $83,521, and I already explained that, it's not really getting more, it's because we didn't have a reduction. So the total change in this levy was 1.638260, which is an increase of 10.57%. And what went in your Dropbox, the difference between the proposed levy and this levy, it was like eight point, can't remember it off the top of my head, was actually due to the referendum increase?
8.66.
Yeah. So prior to the referendum being increased, it was a 1-point-something increase in the levy. Okay, so then if we go to, now we have to do a bond overview. We approved the budget back in October. And when we look at it for the tax purposes, we're looking at more of a total overview of the budget. And the reason why is they're kind of looking at our total amount, how much of it is supported by taxes. So also when we look at this, we exclude Fund 45, which is our PRA, Trust for Retiree Health Insurance. And we also include, exclude our self-insured dental and health insurance. So the total revenue is $62,263,705, and the total expenditures is $62,319,29. And you could match it back to the actual budget with those three funds excluded. Okay, and so of that total revenue, how much of it is supported by taxpayers, state, federal? That's what this slide shows. So the, and you have to remember, this is the current year budget, so it has nothing to do with what was approved of the increase. So you should see this amount higher next year, the levy-supported portion of it, which this year is 25%. So we still get the majority of our aid from state aid. And then the taxpayers is getting bigger, and then it's always a little bit of federal. And then miscellaneous local is your, like your lunch fees and fees for participation. And then what do our expenditures pay for? This just shows the different categories. And when you're looking at this, this is all funds lumped together. And then there's just a second way of showing what the expenditures pay for, and that's like for program, whether it's administration, district support, elementary, secondary, vocational, special ed. And then if there's any questions?
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah. Thank you, Kim. So that was our last item in the superintendents report for tonight. We're going to move on to the action item portion of our agenda. So, given that there were no questions following the Truth and Taxation presentation, our first action item is, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second to approve the 2017 payable 2018 levy in the amount of $17,134,016.81. Could I get a motion in a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the investment advisory agreement with PFM Asset Management Corporation?
As I shared with Board members, we've been with PFM to manage our other bonds. So for our high school, they're the ones that, they manage it, they meet with Kim on, when are we going to need the money, when are we going to have the flow, what interest rates? I also sit on the Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund, which oversees the management to make sure that they can't do high-risk investment. And there are basically two major investment firms in the state of Minnesota, PFM and PMA. And PFM is sponsored by the Minnesota School Boards Association and MAS, which is the Minnesota Association of Superintendents. So we've been with them, they've done a very good job, and we recommend continuing our investment with them.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next motion will be a roll call vote, just to get Andy warmed up, and it's a motion to approve a resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Should have received the full resolution in your Dropbox. Could I get a motion in a second, and then we'll hear about why this has to happen?
A motion.
Second.
Could we have some discussion?
I'm really not quite sure why it has to happen, other than the fact that if we needed to have a special election, if one of you would move out of state or move out of town, and we had to have a school board election, the state wants us to have our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, saying that the polling places have been established, and that's how we go about it.
You're partially right.
Okay.
Deanna's going to tell us the rest of the reason.
Last year, legislators changed their rules, and we now have to use a polling location that is used by either the county or the city. So Tilden is no longer a viable polling location for us. So once we pass this, we still have to pass it every year to identify what we would use in the case of a standalone election, but we also had to change it, so you should have noticed that precinct 5 was, is Calvary. That was a good choice for right now, it might not be a good choice next year. And the other thing is that by next year, they may have gotten rid of this. They did it not realizing, surprise, surprise, how it impacts different school districts and even some of the townships. So they're hoping that it gets changed.
That there's, there may be some...
And now you have the rest of the story.
Okay. I'm going to make a note that my polling location has changed, and I did notice it.
Yeah, nobody quit. We don't want to do a special.
Yeah. We're in, we're good. Is there any further discussion?
Andy Bertram, yes. Joe Becker.
Yes.
Peter Bussenbach.
Yes.
Dan Kader.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Hadeen.
Yes.
Russ Roloff.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the 2017, 2018 goals as listed below for Superintendent Tim Collins?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Thank you. Could we have some discussion from somebody on the administrative committee? Or Tim?
I'll make it quick. I'll make it a little more concrete this time, so that's, you know, they're a little more, they're easier to track and be able to tell if you hit the benchmarks, so good job, Rosie, that you're involved in that process of developing the goals for the upcoming year.
Yep. And again, this is linked to a piece of Tim's contract that has a pay-for-performance element, so establishing the goals for that reason.
Yeah, we normally aim for three to five goals, in my time on the Board anyway, that's what we've aimed for. The three that we have here, obviously, the biggest thing that we had for 2017, 2018 was the bond and levy vote, and putting together the materials for that, having the communication, developing a communication plan for the community, etc. developing a communication plan for the community, etc. So that, that was big. The five-year technology plan, again, that's, it kind of was on the, on the wayside a bit and now that needs to come back to the forefront. And then one that was just late-breaking, you know, within the last six months really was, was ties and how, you know, are we going to move forward with or without them and what are the plans around that?
Good. Well, thank you to the committee for pulling this together. I know it's always, it's good to have that conversation as a group because I think it helps focus us and clarify for Tim what, what the board feels like are the important issues at hand. And just the, the process of discussion is really valuable, I always feel. Is there any further discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next action item is, could I get a motion in a second to accept the resignation of three individuals?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, could I get a motion in a second to approve a handful of leaves, quite literally five?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, could I get a motion in a second to accept the retirements of the following staff members?
A motion.
Second.
Thank you. I know I've been asked in the past to read these names in case somebody doesn't have the agenda open in front of them. And we have Jennifer Anderson from McCullough, Larry Beauvais from the middle school, and Carol Keneff from the middle school. Is there any discussion?
Just thank you for the years.
Yeah, some really valuable years of service, absolutely.
I worked with Jennifer Anderson up by scout, she did a great job on math many years ago. So I'm sure she did a great job over the years with the kids.
Yeah, absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? And no, you cannot say no to somebody retiring. So don't even smile like you're thinking about it.
Good go-out style.
All right. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the, to approve the employment of three individuals?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. That was our final action item for the night. Under other business, we have some upcoming meetings that will be in the year 2018. Just let that sneak in for a minute. 2018. There'll be a...
I need it.
Yeah, Dan's like, what? I'm sorry, am I done now? I'd like to be done now. There will be an organizational meeting involving our two new school board members that will be brief, just to get you guys sworn in, and then we'll move to a work session that will be held at JFK on the 3rd. We have a high school student lunch, we'll sort out who's all on that prior to the 16th. And our next regular board meeting, pending approval of the current calendar, at the org meeting, is on the 17th. I think that time should probably be 6 o'clock. I think that's likely the time that we're going to ask to approve. It's typed in as 6:30 right now on the agenda, I would expect. We'll aim to keep it at 6 o'clock. Is there any other business?
I'm going to adjourn.
I was going to say, I'm just going to concede the motion to adjourn. Second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. I'm going to cry a little bit, Dan, just a little.